I call this meeting of the Omni City Council, November twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five to order. Please rise, say the pledge allegiance remains standing as Reverend Gary Waples as our opening prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and just for all.
Let us pray. Gracious and heavenly Father, we come here before you tonight with this meeting of the Council of Omni. We grant your presence be with them, Lord, through this night and through the coming days, weeks, months, and years. Help them, Lord, to discern your will, help them to serve the common good of the members of this community. Help them to reach out to others in love as you have loved us. These things we pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. Roll the roll, please.
Councilman Miller?
Present.
Councilman Farenbacher?
Here.
Councilwoman Ikorst?
Present.
Councilman Iyer?
Present.
Mayor Lambert?
Here. First item on the agenda is public comments and presentations, and I believe we have public comments from Mr. Chris Simpson.
My first time for public comments and went in the right spot.
Indeed.
Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight for two purposes. First, I want to extend an invitation to all of you to our open house. It's coming up early part of next month. The Omni Central College Health Profession Center is nearing completion, and our open house is going to be held on Thursday, December eleventh, from three to seven P M. There's a special dedication program at four P M. So if I may, hand out some invitations.
Thank you. Pretty good.
Thank you, sir. As I mentioned, you'll see on the invitation that it is Thursday, December eleventh, three to seven P M. If you can't make it for the dedication ceremony at four, certainly you're able to come and get a chance to tour the new facility. Speaking of this facility, it's going to house the nursing and radiography programs at Omni Central College. Those are two of our signature programs, and it'll be open to begin the spring semester in January of two thousand and twenty six. It's going to provide a state-of-the-art facility for both nursing and radiography. It will include two nursing classrooms, a nursing skills lab with six beds, two nursing simulation labs, a radiography classroom, two radiography simulation labs. That also includes an energized lab, which is, from what they tell me in the world of radiography, a big deal. And also then a commons area for students and faculty offices. So if you don't get a chance to come at four o'clock, then certainly you can come and have a chance to tour it at another time. Second thing is I want to thank you for your support. We're excited about this project, and it's been a long time coming. Depending on who you ask, the project dates back to two thousand and twelve, or two thousand and five, or the late nineties. It just depends. So it's been in the works for a very long time, and we're excited to see it get to this point. And we had our groundbreaking back in January, and now we're going to have our dedication ceremony in December. So really, the project, once it got started, went very quickly and has gone very well. So thank you for your support. We're excited about what this is going to mean to our nursing and radiography programs at Omni Central College.
Thank you very much, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further public comments? Further public comments? Seeing that, we'll move on to presentation of the consent agenda, which includes the improvements of the council meeting on November tenth, two thousand and twenty five, and approved and authorized payments of council payable November twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five. Any of these items need to be removed from the consent agenda? I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Seeing that, we'll proceed to vote. All those who favor aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda, presentation of board and system resolutions. Presentation of firefighters' pension required reporting to the municipalities. Ms. Quinn.
So each year, the fire pension board is required to report to the municipality this report. I'll go through it just kind of in summary, but our total assets, actuarial value at the end of four thirty twenty five is two million eight hundred and forty one thousand. We're expecting thirty thousand from payroll deductions for the active firefighters. The contributions from us will be two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. The estimated pay for the retirees is two hundred and sixty six thousand. And after the actuarial was completed for this year, the amount that we need to contribute to meet the annual requirement to the fund is sixty nine thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. The net income received last year was two hundred and sixty eight thousand, which was an actual investment return of nine point nine one percent compared to the assumed rate of seven point one two five percent. The prior year was ten point two two percent. So both of those have had good years of returns. Currently, we have five active employees. We have three entire firefighters collecting pension and one survivor collecting pension. The funded ratio for the fund is eighty four point five percent. We need to get that number to ninety percent by the year two thousand and forty. This year, it made a big jump. It was seventy five point nine percent last year. So it's definitely doing much better.
Questions, comments?
Why do you think we had such a large return on the investment? Just good market conditions?
Yes. Yes, even as the market's going up. That's all that is, is our investments from what we're doing. And within the last few years, they have been with the state fund, so they're investing a larger pool and getting better returns.
Well, not don't most pensions, um, they use bonds, equities, relies on interest rates and property values going up, is that?
Not anymore because it's not with the individuals. It's with the state, with the F P I F. And so they've got the whole thing there, and they have different investing rules than what we had as individuals.
Further questions, comments? I would accept a motion to a to accept.
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing that, we'll proceed to vote. All those who favor aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is presentation of the firefighters' pension board formal request for tax levies.
So the fire pension board met, um, it's been a couple of weeks ago, and we voted to present this tax levy request. If you look in the far right-hand column, that's what we're requesting for this year. Starts out with the recommended levy from the actuarial of the sixty nine thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. We have expenses in there of the fifteen hundred for the annual report, eight hundred for the audit, ninety eight hundred for the fiduciary insurance, and five thousand for investment pool fees, which gets us a total of eighty seven thousand. And then we're suggesting to contribute an additional hundred thousand this year, which gets us to a hundred and eighty seven thousand eighty dollars. That's compared to last year, we requested two hundred and one thousand seven ninety five.
Questions, comments? Questions, comments, or a motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Further discussion, seeing that, we'll proceed to vote. All those who favor aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is presentation of the police pension required reporting to municipalities. Ms. Quinn.
So this is the same, this is what we talked about for the fire pension, except it's the police pension. We have actuarial value of our assets there is eight million seventy seven thousand. We're expecting a hundred and four thousand nine hundred and twenty eight from employees that are deducting from their payroll. We have employer contributions, which is what we will contribute of six hundred and seventy three thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars to pay the pensions out next this year. It's seven hundred and fifty nine thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. And the actuarial report says our annual requirement provided this year is five hundred and thirty four thousand five hundred and ninety two dollars. There our net income from this year is seven hundred and twelve thousand dollars, which is nine point one nine percent compared to the assumed rate of six point eight percent. Last year, it was nine point three nine percent. So both of those years were good also. We have thirteen active employees in the police department. We have eleven retirees collecting pension, three survivors, and one deferred retirement. The funded ratio in this one is not nearly as good. It is fifty nine point two percent. Last year it's fifty seven point two, so it did not go up very much at all. That rate also needs to be ninety percent by the year two thousand and forty. Our unfunded actuarial accrued liability there is five million five hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars.
Questions, comments? Questions, comments?
Does it usually creep up that slowly each year as far as the funding ratio?
It can. I mean, the police one is the worst one that we have, and it doesn't move very fast, yes.
Questions, comments? Questions, comments, or a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Further discussion, seeing that, we'll proceed to vote. All those who favor aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda, presentation of police pension board formal request for tax levy. Ms. Quinn.
So here what the police pension board met a couple of weeks ago also, and in far right column is what they are presenting. Um, the recommended levy there that we have to get for the actuarial is five hundred and thirty four thousand five hundred and ninety two. We have same expenses for the annual report and audit fee of fifteen hundred and eight hundred, with fiduciary insurance expense of thirteen thousand, and investment pool fees around six thousand. That brings us up to five hundred and fifty five thousand eight hundred and two. And here we want to contribute an additional hundred and fifteen thousand, which gets us up to six hundred and seventy thousand eight hundred and ninety two compared to six hundred and fifty four thousand that we did last year.
Questions, comments? Questions, comments, or a motion?
Like a motion?
Second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Further discussion, seeing that, we'll proceed to vote. All those who favor aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is discussion of tax levy. Ms. Quinn.
Okay, so I put a packet in your mailboxes that had some proposals for a tax levy on it. Um, we start on the far left-hand side. Those are the percentages, um, that are max. The ones that have a max on them are what we put into the general fund. And everything else except for the audit goes into other special funds. You look in the column that says twenty three, twenty four there. The actual for twenty three, twenty four is one point six two five seven percent for two million eighty thousand dollars. Our budget last year was two million one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The actual for this year for twenty four, twenty five, the rate is one point five five zero zero five, and that was for two million one hundred and thirty eight thousand. The next two columns are what we're proposing for this upcoming year. The first one, we went through a payroll calculation and calculated out everything that we needed for all of the accounts. That one came up to, um, two million two hundred and seven thousand, which is one point five oh nine four six percent, which is a decrease of point zero four zero six from last year. I should also say that, um, Kim Houchen gave us an estimate on E A V, so we've increased it by six percent. That's her estimate. The option two, I have adjusted those balances based on the balances in our accounts. There we've came up then with two million one hundred and ninety eight thousand eight hundred and sixty with a decrease of point zero four six five. The rate would be one point five oh three five eight. The bottom section is what the library is requesting. They are requesting the full four point nine nine percent, which is a decrease of point zero zero one seven on their percent from the prior year.
Questions, comments? Questions or comments? Remind the council that we'll take formal action upon the tax levy at our next meeting in December.
If you have any questions between now and then, you can always come and see me.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Quinn. Next item on the agenda is resolution to amend the twenty five, twenty six police department budget for the organized retail crime grant. Ms. Quinn.
Chief Plummer applied for this grant. It's for six thousand dollars. We did get the money, so, um, adjusting the budget to recognize the income there, and that will be spent on paying about half of the, um, amount for the, um, flop cameras for one year. We'd pay twelve thousand a year for that prescription, and so this pays about half of that.
Thank you very much. Anything to add, Ms. Chief Plummer? Questions, comments, or a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Further discussion, seeing that, we'll proceed to vote. All those who favor aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is a resolution to accept quote for electrical services way formal bidding procedures and amend the twenty five, twenty six budget. Mr. Burke.
This is a resolution request amendment to the budgets, the water department. Uh, we've had a main breaker that, um, failed, and we've had several additional electrical components, uh, that failed as well, and thought it was in the best interest of the city to go in and have them all fixed at the same time. And we're asking for seventeen five, but in the.
Questions, comments, motion to approve?
Um, why did they all fail? I mean, age or?
Age, a lot of. That's what I was told.
Where moving this money from?
It was coming out of the reserves for the water department.
Questions, comments?
Uh, one comment, I guess. I prefer to see some kind of line items in this bid, not just it's seventeen thousand five hundred if we do it, and it's zero if we don't.
We'll see what we do with the next, uh.
From the looks of that sheet, I would say all we needed to do was click that, and then it would have popped it up, I'm guessing. Is that how?
I don't know. Courtney did this, so I'm not sure.
I keep pushing it, but nothing happens on the paper, so I guess we need to compute for that. Any further discussion or motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Further discussion, seeing that, we'll proceed to vote. All those who favor aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is a resolution to amend the twenty five, twenty six industrial commissary budget to add a line item for the placer A I contract. At the last, um, R C D C meeting, the original county development corporation agreed to pay half for one year, which would be six thousand from them and then six thousand for us, and that would get us contract to where any employee in the city can utilize that program to, for primarily economic development purposes. I'm not sure that the street department might have some use for it, maybe some other departments, but by primarily an economic development tool, as we discussed earlier, that we can utilize to, for instance, in our tourism grants, are we fulfilling those goals of bringing people into town, where did they come from, was it a successful event? So, um, we are, we have talked about this for a couple of times. Like I said, R C D C has agreed to, um, fund this for half a year with the city, so we can utilize it to, in particular, go to businesses and kind of give them an idea of where their customers might be coming from.
We will need to change this budget amendment to six thousand dollars because I thought it was five whenever I gave that to Kelsey. So that number will be six thousand, and the contingency line will go to forty four.
Okay. Questions, comments?
That was a comment that I had because the second sheet on the placer A I states twelve thousand. That was just a typo.
Well, no, because, uh, R C D C's paying for half of it.
Right. Are they going to do six and we'll do six?
Yeah.
How much do we contribute to R C D C annually? I mean, we do contribute a sizable chunk to R C D C, so in a way, we're almost, we're still paying for this through R C D C coming back into funding this.
I agree.
That's just an observation.
Yeah.
And second, I'm, I'm not terribly comfortable with this program. Um, it seems invasive to me. We're tracking, we're tracking people. It says we're tracking phones, but phones are inanimate objects. They are attached to people. And then when it states things like, uh, we, we pull, we strip identifiers and names and other persistent, I like that, other persistent device I Ds from the data before it's, it's distributed, but still, that data is somewhere. And I would say for the right person, it's one click away from all of a sudden seeing an I S P to a name attached to that. And then you dig, look into their slideshow a little further, and it talks about it tracks home locations. So if someone is to look at a home location where this data is coming from, they could just attach a name who lives at that home address. So then this is the way this is, we're really tracking people.
I, I'm not terribly comfortable with it either, but it is there. It is public record. It is, everybody else is utilizing it.
I think it's a slippery slope, Mayor. I think it's just a one click away from all of a sudden now we have put names with.
It's any different than using the flop cameras to track people coming in and out of town.
But in a, in a town of our size, do we not know pretty well where people are going and what events are being, uh,
No, we don't.
Accommodated, and you can do a head count, you can do a pretty good estimate on how many people are at this event.
I think from what we've seen, we, we know that we don't understand that very well from looking at this data. Our understanding of it is fairly limited.
Is it because of lack of, uh, attention to those details, attending an event and doing a head count?
Well, I think I would say that a lot of the time it is that when you're trying to run an event, there's only three or four people that are volunteering. It gets pretty hard to count people when you're trying to get trash to the dumpster. That would be my experience with those events.
If I may, I think there's, most people probably don't realize that on an average, this is very small scale compared to their daily lives, where they travel places, all the apps on their phone. They have no idea how much data is actually collected on them every day. Do, do I like it? I don't like it, but I sign up for free apps all the time, and I, I kind of accept that somebody, somebody knows that I go, I drive down to Louisville, Kentucky three times a week and, you know, until.
I hear you, Councilman Farenbacher, but we're of a different generation. I manually set up my phone, and I say, no, 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 all the way down the line. Big brother is watching, has been for decades. And this is just one step creeping closer, very easy to all of a sudden put names with this, these, these tracking devices.
That's my understanding that that is not possible with this app, with this program.
Here, but.
But I will guarantee you it is possible for other people, and it's already being.
It could be manipulated, yeah.
On the scale of practicality, this is the least of the things that an average person would worry about. I mean, Facebook is doing way more, uh, tracking of your information than what we would.
Sometimes the most innocuous data in the wrong hands presents them an opportunity for a, a crime.
Understood.
My observation.
I guess my question remains, what are we going to do with this data?
So for one thing, we've talked with both R C D C and the chamber. We're going to do some, um, some workshops with our food retail hospitality sector, and then with also our retail sector to let them know what events draw people into town, perhaps where they're coming from. Um, there are some retail, um, businesses in town that this data may not be as useful for, except for the fact that we can look at heat maps and tell you, well, Florida's a big op, or opportunity, or Jasper County's an opportunity. And perhaps you should be putting more of your advertising focus into those counties, so we can help some of the people that this wouldn't help on a day-to-day basis, but walk in places, in particular restaurants and retail shops, especially our local young ones. We can go to them and be like, hey, we know that this is going to be a big weekend for you, and so you need to do something to help get more people into your door. So we would prefer to have more people to go into your local business than we would to the, you know, the fast food store.
I guess my response to that would be in a town of eighty eight hundred people, they already know it's going to be a big weekend. I don't, I don't, there's just multiple things that I don't particularly care for or not, not what Mr. Iyer was saying, because I don't, I know I'm constantly tracked, and I don't care. But I do see that it looks like we're not signing on for one year. We're signing up for, the term is.
No, we're only signing up for one year.
Says we'll continue for thirty six months thereafter, each renewal and additional terms.
We got an updated one. Did we include that in here? It's just for, didn't I say? So it's only, we did get an updated one, and it's only for twelve months.
This is the one I'm voting on, though, right?
No, you're voting on a twelve-month contract.
It just, yeah, all fees are non-refundable, and in the event of any termination, customer will pay and fall for the services. I just, I, I don't see what we're going to use this for, because if we're going to have a festival or something, everybody in town already knows that, hey, there's going to be a lot of people in Omni. I don't need placer A I to tell me that.
If what?
I did do exhaustive research on their website. They're geared toward businesses looking for, you know, hey, where do I need to locate, or how do I increase with this demographic in this area? I don't see it as a municipality tool, really.
Well, I mean, I did, I think I did share with you the fact that from two thousand and eighteen to this previous year, we had fifty fewer thousand, fewer thousand, fifty thousand fewer visitors to Musgrove Park. And we can directly relate that back to not having tournaments, and that's a tremendous amount of money that is not being brought into town.
How did, how did you arrive at fifty thousand, Mayor?
That's, that's just, they did a report. We looked at Musgrove Park over seven-year period.
These, these people did a report? So they just did it on their own nickel and said?
Yeah, I asked them when we were going to the, the data.
And this is by tracking cell phones, basically?
So there are, um, I'm, I'm not an expert on it, but, um, let's take our parks, park slides for example. There are people that are willing to drive for events like that for their family, and there are families that either may have forgotten about it, or, um, it's a great weekend for that. What this particular kind of data does is it puts it in front of their face that the likely people that would want to see park lights, a particular festival. The, the, the data business is more about advertising something that they believe in your past history will get you to buy. So what we, what we, I believe it will benefit the most from with this is that we're drawing outside, um, revenues or, and, and visitors.
Because we know, uh, traffic count, we can draw in people from, how, how does, how does that coordinate?
They, so whatever.
We know where they're coming from.
But they were, because they've already come here. I mean, they've come. That's how, why they, they were tracked. They have their number.
I mean, but if, but if you had the least bit of curiosity about the way our traffic patterns work, then you want to know where they're coming from.
It's neat to know, but how, how, why are we spending the money on something that's just neat to see, but what we probably already.
I mean, I think some of us on this council would like to see our city grow, and I think some of the tools that you utilize for growth is you utilize data that tells us what are the things that we are doing that works and those things that don't. And if we are doing things that don't work, well, then we should stop doing those and focus on those things that we know do.
How do you, how do you correlate things that work with a traffic count?
If you know that there's more people in town when you spend money.
But we, we know that, we know that event because it's.
Fairly straightforward.
An advertised event. Say like the solar, but we advertise, people came, but because we know, we, and we got a count. I, I don't see how that's going to make more people come to town because we know who came to the last event.
Because then we can know how to better focus our attention on things.
What, by advertising where they came from?
Yeah. For, I mean, for one thing.
Really?
Or for putting more money into those events that draw people.
Well, if, um.
I don't get the correlation. I just don't see that.
Well, I can't, I mean, I can't draw a picture for you any clearer than that, I don't think.
A lot of, uh.
It's, 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 it's after the fact. It's not going to assist in a future event.
Most of those events are, are annual things. So if.
Well-known and well-advertised and historical, I mean, the Fall Festival, the Fourth of July, the, the, the County Fair, all these things are already known. So simply because we know a. So simply because we know a, a count, a foot traffic count from the following year, how will that benefit the next year?
Well, because if you can see trends, whether it's growing, or whether it's shrinking, or whether it's staying the same, do we not want it to grow?
Do we not already know that, you, you can walk through an event and see, and as far as Musgrove Park.
You can anecdotally, but we don't really have that data, you cannot find me anywhere where we have that data that is anything more than anecdotal.
Is that not enough to go by?
No, anecdotal data is not good data, I mean, if we had anecdotal data, we wouldn't, it would change the way we do our, our pensions, would it not?
That, apples and oranges, I'm sorry, no.
No, data is data, I mean, it, I mean, it works on everything, I mean, just because you don't like the whole idea of this, I don't particularly like the whole idea of this. But that doesn't change the fact that it's available, so then we can find any number.
Whiz bang available, hey, cool, we had so many traffic counts last year that, that, I don't see how that ties in to benefiting. The economic development of, of the town.
Well, if.
It's not like, i- i- if it were a, a company wanting to come and locate here, and we can say, well, because this many people came to our Fall Festival, if you come and. Bring a booth to the Fall Festival, you'll have X amount of feet to go buy your booth next year.
Well, and so for instance, we can utilize this.
Talking about existing businesses, they already know the count.
They, but they don't know the count, that, that's ridiculous, I think.
They can do by sales.
We could go talk to Mr. and Mrs. Drefsu, and I think they would tell you they don't know exactly the count of when people come in.
Well, they can, by the end of the day, they know their receipts, and compared to this date last year, they know their receipts, and that gives them an idea of how much traffic they have.
Well, gosh, let's not help them to prepare for a busy day then.
By having a traffic count is not gonna prepare them anymore for a busy day.
That is, that's your opinion.
And that is your opinion, Mayor, I don't think you have a valid argument here.
Well, I, I think that you're arguing because you don't like it, that's what I feel.
I set aside the, the privacy invasion from the practicality of spending the money just to get a traffic count of events in a town of this size that we already.
So I do believe that other towns will also utilize this to find people that might wanna come into town. And be like, this is where, we'll also get leakage data from this about where we are losing money to other places. And where we haven't access, and that is important.
Because they, they went somewhere, how do we know they were gonna come here, and they went there, I mean, how do you correlate that?
So leakage data is one of the most important things you'd use for retail recruitment, and. Um, and it's just a well-known thing, Esri does it, Esri used to provide us through Ameren, but they no longer do that through Ameren. We have these leakage reports, so then you understand your retail environment, and then you know how things move in and out of town, and where the money's moving. And those are all important things if we want to continue to grow our commercial environment in only Illinois.
Want us leakage?
Leakage is if you have, for instance, let's take a sector, let's take furniture, maybe there is two million dollars worth of furniture in only Illinois, but only.
At retail, you're talking about at retail?
Yes, only five hundred thousand is being sold here, well then, that hundred and, one point five million is leakage, it's going somewhere else. So we can figure out, or maybe you're bringing in more, so there are some things like grocery that we bring in more than we should. And you can see that we have an abundance of grocery here, and it's bringing in money, so you can track and see where we might be weak, and where we're strong. And where there might be access.
They track the dollars spent, or just where the phone is?
They also track the dollar, they will also give us the leakage reports.
How, how do they know how many dollars are spent?
Because you, there's a whole system in.
So it's an average?
Well, I mean, they utilize credit card receipts and things like that, they work with all, all this data is out there. I mean, so it comes through any number of sources.
And across reference sources, so when you are Googling something, you, for example, you're looking for furniture, it then directs you perhaps to a town that's only ten miles away from you. Instead of going to, let's say, Mount Vernon, or uh, on your Facebook, um, you like particulars kind of events, kind of, let's say, winter events. In future, that data, knowing the sort of um, events that you like, then puts that in front of your face in different. Cross-reference industries, I, 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 not everything is just traffic, we saw where you went, a lot of things are just your online data, what do you search in your Google search, or um.
Well, and a lot of this is, like I said, just pure retail data, which some of it comes from the state, from the Department of Revenue, they have the, what's the reports we used to look at that have the.
Sick report.
The which one?
Sick report.
Yes, and so it'll tell you how much money's being spent, broken down, sales tax-wise, in Richland County, now it doesn't break it down to where we can see necessarily where it's being spent. But then it gets aggregated, and they run it through different systems to see how much access or leakage we have. I mean, there's a number of things that we can do with this, just one of those is tell how many people we've got coming to town, and where they're coming from. And where they're happening here, and what places they visit.
If we did it for one year, we would have, it, it would have to defend itself.
Yeah, I agree with that.
If, if it's a total um, waste of money, we'll know next year, and we won't do it again.
Yeah, I mean, and I think that's fair, and I mean, we do have to want to use it, we have to have people that are willing to utilize. Further questions, comments, questions, comments, or motion?
I have another question, I guess, so, but Placer doesn't. Place ads in front of people, right, all they do is supply us with data, and then we have to figure out how to, okay, so. How do we get our ad on this phone?
No, I mean, that is not, that's a completely separate thing, this is all about where people are, where they're coming from, where they went.
Like, that's it, right?
And then leakage data and some other reports, I mean, they'll give us a, they gave, I think, at last meeting, there was a report on. The market of Richland County, and it'll update all these markets every year, or every month.
So this Placer visit the Department of Revenue website to concoct their leakage data?
I'm guessing that they're pulling it every month.
Cause I don't know how you.
I'm guessing they're going in there, and because all that data's online.
I don't know, I really don't know.
Have we talked to any municipalities and what they call?
Yep, Washington, Illinois, up, uh, suburb of Peoria, well, it's outside of Peoria, it's about thirteen thousand, they have utilized it for the last. Five or six years, I think, they have had a great deal of success with trying to help with their downtown revitalization efforts, and showing people how many people are down there. And that it would be a good place to locate a retail business, I mean, they had very high, good things to say about it. I spoke with their economic development person for a while, about a month ago.
So again, by what you just stated, it's for companies or businesses who might want to locate only, based on, and we could say, this is how much foot traffic we have. In XYZ businesses already here, if you have a comparable business, this is what you might expect.
We can utilize it for that too, though.
Because it was first presented, and this will help this, the existing business.
Well, I think it helps all this, I mean, if you have any curiosity about, I mean, because we, I don't think we have a good idea about how many people are in town. At any given time, we had no good idea how many people were downtown for the Eclipse Fest until we had them do this, or to the Eclipse.
You always choose the argument when we have uh, like a, a tournament, we can tell by the increased revenue, there were sales tax back from the retail, and from hotel and motel taxes.
But we can.
And so that, we've been utilizing that data, why, why can't we just continue, continue to use that demographic?
Because at the same time that we have lost tournaments, we've also had inflationary pressures and an increase in our sales tax that masks what might have happened, had those things all stayed constant. From two thousand and eighteen when we peaked and then went down. That'd be my argument, I mean, because we know for a fact there's fewer people going out there, because we had seventeen tournaments eight years ago, five years ago, and this year we had three. But we had no real way to quantify.
The very fact that there are fewer tournaments, we have fewer foot traffic, I mean, we already have. Means of knowing how many people comes to town, I mean, we don't need to discuss it further, Mayor.
We had anecdotal accident data, questions, comments, or a motion to approve?
I will make a motion.
Motion made.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Further discussion, seeing none, we shall proceed to vote, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion passes, thank you very much, next item on the agenda, report from elected and appointed official status board, Mr. Parker.
I don't have anything additional pertaining to the um. Status of the departments here, I would like to uh, recognize Mr. Jamie Hackfield, he's here tonight, he represents IBW, which represents our employees. Uh, and the water sewer, different departments out, represented by IBW, so, Jamie, glad to have you here tonight.
Anything further, any questions for the city manager? RC DC report? Nothing there, Chamber of Commerce report?
Uh, our big thing is the tree lighting will be this Wednesday at five thirty, across the street from here, we will have cookies and hot chocolate and singing. Mm-hmm. And, and we're hopefully going to have the Christmas parade.
On Saturday, or Sunday?
One or other, it's rainy forecast.
And then a week from Friday, we have um.
Um.
Moonlight Matters.
Yes.
Okay.
Plenty of opportunities to be downtown.
That is correct, Tourism Board report, nothing there, closed session. All right, uh, next item on the agenda is to approve minutes of the closed session on November tenth, twenty twenty-five. How were those? Oh, yeah, all right, we'll skip over that till the next meeting, we've not got a chance to look at those. Next item on the agenda is a resolution authorized the. Probably can't do any of those, really, we'll get, we'll go to that next time when we have closed sessions. Is anything further, any further business to be had?
I would like to discuss the deer population in the city, and if, what, if anything we might do to decrease. The large deer population in town. Any thoughts on this, we have, we have herds in town.
Especially around the cemetery.
And uh, they're safety hazard, traffic, um, they do a lot of damage to vegetation, to landscaping, um.
Do we have any idea why they're coming to town?
I think it's a, I think it's a safe place.
No shotguns.
We have some fairly large areas of, of open space that they can kind of move back and forth, so especially around the cemetery, the park over to CC.
I know I had three in my yard the other day, we came over to one of your yards.
I've had fourteen, I've had up to fourteen in my backyard, I live kind of along on tree line, or woodlot. But is there a concern that we have any liability with allowing this population to grow into a sizable number that presents hazards to public safety via traffic?
Uh, we wouldn't have the liability, we don't own the deer.
No, but it's like, uh, we, we don't let wild dog packs run the town, Matt, you know? I mean, because it's a hazard. Just, it's, a lot of people, that's, if they talk to me about two things, one of them is, what do we do with all these deer? I think, well.
I generally eat them.
Which requires shooting them, because you can't shoot them in town, you can't discharge firearm in town, you don't want anybody with a crossbow in town, you don't, can't poison them, because you'd end up all kinds of domestic animals poisoned. I don't know if you'd have to snare them or trap them, but I, it just, it is a, it is a challenge to our, to our town, yeah.
Imagine, all municipalities are dealing with that.
Maybe I could have special permission to shoot them with my crossbow, as a public service.
I don't know what we would do.
Well, it's been brought to my attention as a concern, yes.
I guess we could, I mean, I don't know what, I don't know what municipalities do to.
I have, nothing, nothing online that I can find that other towns are doing anything with it, but I know the po- deer population is sizable, certainly. Not only with, with our town, but Southern Illinois.
Yeah, they're a threat to squirrels.
Well, they'll eat, they'll eat corn, they'll eat nuts, they'll eat anything that a squirrel might.
They ever team up.
Anyway, something that we should consider at some point.
Anything further? Wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and safe travels if you're going anywhere, and I would accept the motion to adjourn.